That's what we'll probably be looking at next.
Right, but I just did it based on 2014 actual expectations. Just to see what it could look like.
Probably talk about it a lot. Fluent with the notes in your.
Let's go. All right, ladies and gentlemen. Get started here. First one up is resolution 57. I believe the last time we talked you were going to hold out till our next meeting. Am I correct in my assumption?
Official means?
Correct.
Okay.
I thought the engineer was going to report to us.
Yeah. You're up.
I'm up.
Fifty-seven.
And what exactly?
This was your question as to the language from the form of resolution.
Right.
For DWD. Yes, I took a look at it and really the form resolution they want is pretty broad. Our resolution is more specific. That being said, you know, if you still have the concerns that you expressed in the last meeting, you could revise the title, the second line of the title, "Torito, Ohio Public Works Commission for Potential Grants for the Funding of Capital Infrastructure Improvement Project in Event Emergency." And then you could...
Excuse me, can I ask some emergency things? Do you mind giving us two questions?
Um, yeah, that's fine. I'll say it twice. Then if you go down to section one...
Whereas, I assume would be the same grant?
Whereas would be the same.
Okay.
Go down to section one, the third line, "Assistance in the form of a grant for each of the following capital infrastructure improvement projects." And you skip down to section two, the second line, delete "Financial Assistance," add and add "Grand Funding" and I think that would be responsive to the concerns expressed.
And that wouldn't take us out of the consideration.
I don't see how...
Comparing it to standard language to give us an easy answer to that question.
And so you'll have that to us before the official meeting? Not when it can read it as...
Unless you want to move forward with it tonight and make it happen on the floor.
Yeah, that's what I think because it's the time...
I think it makes sense.
It was July 31st, right? It's supposed to be in, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, we could, why don't we could pass it tonight if we...
You pre-change the language?
Yeah. Well, just one amendment accepted.
Dave, do you want to make the amendments?
Yeah.
Okay. There's one third read on that one.
Before you do the third reading.
And then the next four related to most of our conversation for the evening. So if anyone wants to start that conversation, feel free.
I guess I'll start off by saying I think we all can agree that we have a roads issue and we're all here to try to fix it. So without that, you know, let's try to make something where it all works with everybody and try to come up with a plan that works for the city. That said, I kind of came up with something that fell a little short according to Rhonda, the mayor, because it didn't address the total rehaul of the very poor, poor roads. But it was a seven-year plan that would raise $7 million and that would, that would take care of the first 20 roads. But speaking with the mayor this morning, he says it comes up a little short because it didn't, wouldn't fund enough for totally fixing all, all those roads. So I never really presented it and I don't have anything to withdraw, but I guess that's my theory is if we can find something that fixes the worst roads now, gain some trust back in with the citizens by saying, hey, we're going out fixing the worst roads, then maybe we have a chance to renew this plan. But it certainly is a starting point for a plan. So then I think the one thing that plan did call for is preventative, preventative measures. And I talked to Mr. Madavanch and he said that any money in the budget right now to help crack seal, help fix, catch basins, cold patch and hot patch would be more in the budget than he had this year. So I think that I allotted $250,000 a year. I asked him if he had enough manpower to do that. He said that they would be able to do enough, a lot with that money, but I'm not sure that he needs that much because he does not sure if he has enough men to do it with. So, but that would be, that would be something to prolong the good roads and the very good roads so that it takes a lot longer for them to become fair and fair to poor. The roads that are, from what I heard, fair and fair to poor are already past that stage of needing crack sealed and cold patched. They're, you know, they're eventually going to need refixed. So Joe, I mean, I, being a novice at it, some of the roads that are at the top of that list, do they need a total rehaul?
Yes, they do.
So the number that there was on that list that we, that we have for the city, yeah, how close do those numbers represent what you think the actual roads when you need to be fixed?
I think that these are accurate numbers. I think these are the numbers we should be working with.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Because the mayor thought that those were the numbers just to surface it, to catch it and like do one layer or something?
The roads rated very poor, poor and fair to poor, these dollar amounts represent reconstructing or recycling the roads. Fair and lower on the list, these costs represent re-surface.
And then I guess by play it would make more sense then.
He was saying too that they needed to be...
Wide in the ditches, right?
Yeah, because they should be 14-foot lanes. So he's talking about curbs and the whole allotment, which I don't think that includes.
Uh, no, these costs do not...
Right.
Realigning ditches or adding curves.
That's what he was talking about.
So I guess that the choices do just, which has been done in the past, because you're going out to fix them, but you're not fixing them to the way that they need to be fixed. For example, when we did those roads over to Air Lane, Barfield, et cetera, we, we took them down because they hadn't been touched in...
A long time.
I want to say almost 30 years. I mean, 20 years, there's still three streets that were never touched. That's 600 grand. Well, they can't just be patched. They can't just be crack sealed. They need to go the same route the other streets did. So we've got to be careful when we're saying, well, let's just do the top 10 or top 20. How are you going to do them? Are you going to do them so they last for 20 years or are you going to do it so they last for a year or two?
Well, he, I mean, this said, those are the numbers that, that are going to make those roads last. There must be additional costs with some curbs and some ditch work. But I think the top 20 roads, I think it was around six, 5.1 million dollars.
Right.
Um, just to fix those top 20 roads.
Yeah, because three of them are half, they're, they're almost 600. The next two are 600. That's a million, million two, just six roads.
So...
I think it's important to consider too that those roads, I'm assuming are full depth reconstruction. They're not like a mill and fill where they're just going to skim some off and put another layer down.
That is correct. The road that you're talking about is a full depth reconstruction or recycling.
In my thinking, where I was going with this, Mr. Bokey, the, the roads that are in the fair condition, if we can band-aid with the preventative maintenance, and my thought was with the original one that had passed, we'd have some preventative maintenance that we could start to proceed with. Now, I know that preventative maintenance is generally within your first one to five years. We have not done a good job of that because we haven't had the funding to do so. So if we can start to figure out one of these that can work and start the preventative maintenance, we can prolong some of those roads that are down the list to do these things. Because we, we've been, the crack sealing, we haven't put enough money in and we know that. But I think that's something we need to take a long, hard look at investing more in.
Yeah, and to your point, I guess the one thing that I would add is like you say, the preventative maintenance is really stuff we should be doing in years one to five when the road is new. So even the roads that are in fair condition, you know, I'm not sure if we want to invest preventative maintenance dollars there. You know, I think we want to be investing the roads that are good, I think is where you want to invest your preventative maintenance dollars and hold those roads in the good category for as long as possible down the road. This way they don't inch up the list on, save us big dollars later.
So you're basically saying that a preventative plan is crucial for any plan now?
For long-term, yeah, financial responsibility, I guess.
What you're trying to do is put a together plan that doesn't just address the roads that need it today. But how do I fund, what I need to do to keep the fair from crumbling to zero? How do I get the rest of them to stay that they're good for five, 10 years? This isn't just a one-year project. I think we've all agreed the fact this isn't ongoing every year. So that, I think the thought was that in 20 years, you're back around to the first one. So it never goes away.
Right.
Ever. So it's not a plan that says, oh, get enough money to fix these roads and then I don't have to worry about the rest because I'm going to be right back in the same spot. And, you know, the roads that are, that were number on the list haven't been touched in 30-plus years. But you drive down Crowe and you're like, well, that's not really way up in the top. But now the way it's got issues, it's going to be back in the top. And that's one of the most, yeah, it's one of the happily traveled roads. So I think whatever we do, we have to look at, not just fixing, but we've got to have money in the budget to keep it going every year. Not just say, okay, we did these and five years later we come back and say, okay, now we want to do five more, but we got to come back and get more money.
I don't want to throw the scare tactic up, but at what point does it become a liability when, you know, they're deteriorating to the point where their, you know, alligator cracking and they're throwing apart? I mean, what point is that a liability on the city?
Well, you have your traditional, I mean, you're asking for personal injury type claims. If your traditional analysis, whether something's open and obvious and generally obviously the city hasn't made an argument in the majority of those claims, so, but you have to factor in the cost of litigating at all.
So I'm having Joseph print out the plan. So do you know if Joe had any indication of how much more that the plan came up short? The putting the curbs and the ditches in?
Instead of the 5.1 million, he thought it was going to take, I think it was 6.7 to get them another 30% to get them in a better...
So we'll put that number on the end and then we'll see what, what it would take out for five, six, seven. And you could do that in your head probably, right?
No.
So the need is how much?
Well, I had it, I had it at 5.1. So we could be 6.7 at 1.5 for maintenance, preventive maintenance, and then have a little bit for repairs, equipment repairs and equipment that we can purchase for our employees. And then there's some incidentals that you can't, you know, those are estimates. So you don't know if they're, they're going to be high or low, but the numbers we have to work with. So she's going to print it out and I'll hand it out to everybody.
But then the other thing, this is the roses, the roads, but part of the slum was not just roads. It was stormwater. And it was brought up that we'll get money from annual, sorry, David's 250. One project was 400. So do we wait and accumulate money and do a project every three years?
We bond it.
I mean, that's basically what you're going to win.
We bond it, that's all.
Absolutely. You never want to borrow a bond. The last conversations when we had...
No, no, we never want to borrow a bond unless we have a year-end income to pay the bond. That's all.
Can I ask Joe a question? So those numbers, do they, they address stormwater as, as, as would affect those roads in particular?
You're saying these numbers?
Yeah, yeah.
No, these, this is payment.
Just payment only, okay. So it would need more for...
But we don't need more.
Crossovers. I've heard that word three times today.
Yeah, we need crossover, we need other things.
Okay. So I bet there's that 30% that might cover it. Does that make sense, that extra money?
We've got your Guadalupe, et cetera.
If we're going to...
What's that?
I said, nobody wants to hear any input other than, you know, we need...
Well, let me present this and then we can get your input.
Okay, we got 15 minutes, go.
Okay, well, I can't hurry her up any faster. We're having a discussion.
No, no, I'm not...
So I'm sorry if we felt that I cut you off. It wasn't my intention.
Well, this is an open dialogue amongst all of us.
I mean, sometimes you take, take the lead and no one else can talk, so...
Well, that is absolutely untrue based on the previous experience here.
But I think we're looking at is we're looking at whether the plan to fix roads the way they need to be fixed. David's saying we could go for bonds.
That's for the storm, for the stormwater portion.
That council said we'd never do that again. We'd never take out another note.
Which council said that?
Said we would take out a note for repairing roads.
That was, I'm sorry, I was sitting here at the table with you, Peggy Spragons and Ken Martin.
Well, that's fine, but we, we haven't had a good roads plan and that's simply because we haven't had a long-term plan. I don't object to the idea of a long-term plan. I think it's the only reason to do.
Rhonda, how about if we round it off around 7.5 to 8 million?
Well, with the extra 30%, I came up with 8.5.
Well, there you go.
I did, Ben.
But wait, let us say include...
That would include very poor and poor roads, totally fixed, refixed, stormwater addressed in all those areas, maybe not any extra areas. But a total rebuild on those roads that they're, they're fixed.
Including curbs?
Well, yeah, the 30% that, that's going to be added on.
He's shaky, no.
No, it's sounding like this 30% that you're talking, again, and I haven't seen this information from Josephine yet, it's sounding like you're including the curbs in this 30%.
That's what, yeah, that's what the mayor...
Well, no, my question is to you, is that right?
Well, I don't know, I haven't seen this information from Josephine.
Well, what's 30% to that number? To the, to the, to the eight, 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 8080 for Valley View Road? How much do you think that you're going to need to put curbs with?
Okay.
Or to fix the, the ditches because there's no curbs on Valley View?
Yeah, I was just going to say Valley View, I don't think it has any curb section. You know, I guess the way, sorry, Josephine.
Sorry.
Let me give you some space there. I guess the way to look at it is, uh, in the memo that we used earlier this year...
I'll turn it over.
First part to treat.
That's okay. The memo that we have from earlier this year, from April of this year, the cost here is $440,000 per mile to relocate the ditches on a road if we need such a treatment. So, I mean, I guess one way to look at it is you can go in here, Valley View Road, like you say, is number two on the list, 7,300 feet, that's almost a mile and a half.
Right.
So...
Add another 400, 600,000.
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess in this plan here, you would take that 5.179 and add 30% would be 6.7 million.
To what, please?
The six-year estimated cost of fixing 20 roads, rated very poor or poor.
Add 30%.
Add 30% for curbs and ditches.
And that is?
Which is seven on the bed.
And then to, to address the preventive road maintenance plan, I had 1.5 million set aside for the same amount for the six years, roughly $250,000 a year. And then if you add everything else in, it comes out to 8.5 million. So the increase to that 7 million will be 8.5 million.
And that includes what?
That includes fixing the top 20 roads that need it.
And what about stormwater?
Well, it's the same thing. It addresses all those curbs, ditches and the crossovers.
Just for those 20 roads?
Just for those 20 roads.
Wait, wait, wait. Our engineer has, has seen this for, for less than 30 seconds, so I think we need to give him time.
True enough.
To tell us, so I guess you got some number crunching to do before now tomorrow.
I've actually seen it for zero seconds.
Right, I didn't, I should have sent it to him earlier.
Oh, dude, here.
Thank you.
All right, sorry.
Well, make a, make the number crunching even harder.
So if we can get a number, I guess my theory, it's more of a theory than a actual numbers. Doesn't matter what the numbers are. I mean, it matters.
Yeah, it matters.
But no, I didn't, but it matters what the numbers are if you stretch it out over a, a set amount of period. So if it can be 6 million, 8.5 million, we can find a, an increase to, to pay for. That's, that's what I'm trying to say. Is that if we could collect it for seven years, we collect it for five years.
Okay, so...
So it should be a set number of years to pave and then after that set number of years we can revisit it and see if the program worked.
So the plan, tentative as it is, and I'm not being critical, is 8.5, give or take.
Right.
We'll get a blessing. And you're saying for how many years? Are we seven years? I've heard five, six and seven.
We don't know, whatever she would have the number.
So we need her blessing on that. All right.
I figured in, to get 7 million, I thought it was going to take seven years.
Okay.
To get 8 and a half million, it's going to obviously take more than seven years. It's going to take at least eight.
Okay, so let's say at seven years, at 8.5 was how much a year were you planning? Were you saying we need...
I'm looking at a million 40 per year.
All right, so just call it a million, right?
Okay. So...
And that's at 0.25. Collecting extra.
Yeah, just, they were talking about increasing income tax by a quarter percent and overex per year.
Right, or coming up with a million-dollar income somewhere else or in the budget. I'm just trying to understand the scope.
Yeah, I understand.
So the 8.5 you're projecting is the roads, the maintenance and the stormwater. And I'm talking, not the road, the stormwater goes with the curbs. I'm talking Bedford Road, Guadalupe.
No, it doesn't include that.
See, we, we're still missing a whole giant piece of the puzzle here.
Right.
It doesn't include Ledge Road, it doesn't include the roundabout at Valley View Highland, it doesn't include Shepherd Road Sanitary, it doesn't include Sue Culver.
It doesn't include Sue, doesn't include Bedford, doesn't include...
Includes those down the road. Includes them on there.
Those are the roads. Paving the road doesn't do you any good if it floods. We still have an issue with stormwater in people's homes and the way it flows, which then degrades the road at some point in time too, but...
Can I ask you a question?
Do you want to fix the road?
Can I ask a question?
No, absolutely.
In regard to the Ledge Road water issue, have, I know that, you know, you're getting a lot thrown at you, but have we come up with an idea or a plan of what really needs to be done to deal with that yet?
For Ledge and Bedford Drain and Study, Kathy Loyah, address...
Let's just call it the Loyah project. We don't know exactly what she...
The Loyah situation.
That whole area.
Yes.
Call it the Loyah, Loyah area project.
The Loyah area. There's a couple of things. The, the approach at this point is that we need to slow the water down upstream well before it gets to Kathy Loyah. By the time it gets to her intersection, it's far too late.
It's too late, I won't go over.
And there are some, some possibilities north upstream of her property, some areas which we can perform some stormwater detention, slow this down and help out not just Kathy Loyah, but quite honestly, help out everybody along the Indian Creek corridor, which is really what we should be doing, not just investing all of our money in one person, but everybody as a whole. So that's the thought. The sewer district, which we know we're now a part of the stormwater management program, repay the fee.
Right.
They have come in here to the city hall and they've met with myself and the mayor and they have told us, now this is verbal, but they sat at the table and they told us that Indian Creek is very high, if not the highest priority corridor on their list to implement some improvements and to spend some money on. So we've got that out there.
That, that is above the community share. That's one of their projects.
That is correct. And the reason being that they've told us this is that Indian Creek falls within the regional...
Yes.
System, not the community, the local community cost share system. So I think, you know, as a city, we need to tap into that regional system funding...
Absolutely.
To pay for these repairs for the Loyah situation as opposed to the city just trying to pay it out of our own pocket or trying to, you know, squeeze it into these budget numbers somewhere. I think that, that's absolutely what we have.
So I think you're telling us that, that for the purposes of budgeting right now and looking at future income, you're saying that we should be taking that project out of the equation?
Yeah, I would say so. At this point, I think you take it out of the equation.
But the question originally, and I appreciate the answer to the equation question was, what, what are we, what do we think? I mean, do we have any firm numbers? Do we have any, do we have something other than a concept? And I'm not being critical, I'm just trying to find out where we're at.
The answer is no, we don't have any firm numbers or solid design. We need to get the sewer district involved and we also need to access the properties that are in question.
And so the sewer district would also be involved in both accessing properties and design?
Yes, they will.
So we're taking everything related to that project out of our talk? At least that's what you're suggesting.
That's what I'm suggesting.
I, I have to laugh because their number one was Big Creek and their other number one was on the east side. So how we went from zero to number one amazes me.
Well, I was just going to say, you know, when we were going through the litigation, they made, I heard that same promise reiterated to several communities, so, I mean, but I haven't been part of the current negotiations.
It's also, I know the resident was told by them that they were going to study it again.
Oh, yeah.
Well, everybody has been...
To get back to these, to these roads?
Well, no, the question is are we funding any for stormwater?
Well, what's, what, how much do we need for stormwater? That's would be the next question.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and I guess to...
The answer, the answer to Jan's question, the Sue, that Lady Guadalupe, what, what, how much money is needed for those projects?
Well, these projects, I think we tap into the, the local community cost share account from sewer district.
Okay.
And for Sue, the original bid from last year was $387,000, I believe. We're looking to cut that in half.
Okay. About that, just did it on my paper.
200K, something a little less.
Yep. For Guadalupe, I think the original estimate, engineer's estimate was 375 or something, along those lines, close to 4.
Yep.
You know, and I, that plan remains unchanged, so I think the cost of that remains unchanged.
So, so almost $600,000. That would make it nine, nine million that we needed.
May I say something because we only have five more minutes and I haven't been able to say anything up to this point.
Well, we're talking about this plan.
It's an open conversation.
Well, I'm going to try to speak to this. Do you understand?
I don't, because this is the plan that we're talking about. So right now we need $9 million to, to, to fix the stormwater, the very poor and the poor roads. Is that a number that we all can agree with?
I don't think you need nine. I think you need the, the lower number because we have 225 from the...
Annual RSD.
From, yes, and, and in the annual...
We don't have it though.
Okay.
We've got to be very cautious in finding them because they have to approve the plans when they give you the money. That's what they told us, so...
But, but to Dave's point...
Money may come, but we don't know when.
To Dave's point, we're not going to do the project without those money. So the money is going to come from there before we do the project.
And it would seem that we, that we can fund over a very short period of time for the road, for the, the Sue Culver and Lady Guadalupe. So I don't think we need to put that in the, in the tax question. That's my point.
So I guess the whole point in my discussion was, how much money do we need to do these 20 roads that are very poor and poor?
Well, 20 roads plus two, you, you got to keep Guadalupe and then you got to keep
Well, okay, plus the two projects, fine.
Yeah.
So then if we can come up with that number, that could be the starting point we get back on.
Can't forget those people.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
Okay.
But you know what I'm saying, that's what...
Are we going on the floor?
We need to, we need to come up with a starting number.
Go ahead Sylvia.
We can discuss it on the floor, it's fine.
We still didn't get the final number that we all agree with.
No.
Speak for a second and then we'll.
Somewhere between eight and nine.
Okay.
I do not agree with any number that's been stated here. We don't know, we don't have a good estimate. And let's start there. Second, we are, we do get storm water money.
So you're not even agreeing with these roads that Mike Ladd and Nick Vini walked and gave an estimate on?
I am not agreeing that we have a solid estimate on these roads that you listed in your plan.
Okay.
Okay, number one. Number two, we are going to have around eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars available if, if in fact we renew the quarter percent and do.
I gotta say, can I ask you a question?
No, thank you. Okay.
I can ask you a question, wait.
Well, let her finish.
Well, I know, but we gotta start right there. How, 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 wait a minute, I just gotta answer my question.
No, I would like to say something.
But you gotta answer my question.
No, I don't, not right away.
Where do you, where do you, where do you wanna get the estimate to fix the road at? Like, who do you think should give the estimate?
We need an overall plan that looks at all the financing and all of the issues regarding these roads. One of them is storm water, I agree. We already have a clear picture that NE RSD has been given the authority to charge us a fee, they're charging us a fee right now. And every resident business is now aware of it.
Which we used to pay. Don't, don't make this out like it's brand new.
No, I'm not saying it's brand new.
That's how we get the two fifty.
It's just, my question is, where do you wanna get the, where do you wanna get the estimates from?
Somebody's talking on the floor.
May I say something?
Sure.
Just a minute. Yeah, I, I understand what Sylvia is saying, that this isn't a firm and concrete number. It's not. We've got an engineer who's sitting over here and we're whipping numbers at him. And he is saying, hold on, not that dramatic, but I haven't even looked at this, so it's not a good number, and you know that.
They, they, the, the plan, they did it last year.
No, 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 no. But then you're adding on thirty percent.
Okay, well, that, that's.
Just let me finish. You're adding on thirty percent for, for curbs, we're gonna get rid of ditches, and this man hasn't had a chance to look at it, so you can't say we have a good number.
We do not have a good number.
She doesn't even agree with the numbers from when Mike Ladd and Nick Vini walked the street.
It doesn't matter what she agrees with, I'm saying you can't agree with the number of eight point five because this gentleman hasn't had a chance to.
I'm not holding to you that either.
Well, okay.
But we're talking about passing ordinances that tax people over X amount of time, and we don't even have the fundamentals down of what we really need and what we're agreeing on. And part of the problem is, we simply haven't had a true roads meeting where we've gone through everything and we've looked at what's the situation is. That's number one. Number two, we don't have a good revenue plan because there's a clear picture here that NE RSD which wanted to charge us before but was not, was suspended from charging us as a community, has now had the authority now placed in their hands to charge us, and they started charging us. So that's a new situation. We didn't plan for that at the beginning of this budget year because it hadn't been in place.
How many, how many roads are all N R S D gonna play for?
I am correct, am I not? So that's number one. Number two, we have to look at what we are doing with regard to the total amount of revenue that we could receive if we simply held it at two percent, which is what I've said before. But I have a specific thing in mind here. We are, we are in a situation where we have spent over a long period of time money on construction and capital needs in these two areas, city hall and recreation center. We are now at the point where we have neglected our roads over that entire period, I would say longer than that. And we need to look at what is the highest priority use of our funding that we could have available if we had a two percent. And therefore, we really need to look at what is absolutely essential to do, which I believe is the roads, and what is optional to some extent and can be planned over a period of ten to twenty years. And so I say this, this process has not led to solid, firm, planned numbers which should be in an ordinance that we're asking people to pay money to the city of Macedonia for. So that's my point, and we can now go on.
So your proposal, this is what this is for, is to talk about this, not go out there and talk to the audience, but talk as a group. Your proposal, if I'm reading this, is we leave it at two percent. And we're gonna fund road improvements, we're gonna do the maintenance and operation of the city rec center, including any new construction, which I can tell you right now won't happen based on the dollars needed to perform any of that, so.
Well, I don't think that that's true.
Your discussion, and I was also to allocate, Mark, have you looked at this? Does the changing of fifty percent to current expenses, eight and a half to general improvements?
Yeah, so I drafted this.
He drafted it.
But is that changes to what we have today?
So what this does, it's a ten-year quarter percent tax increase, eighty percent of it.
Well, it is an increase because it's gonna drop to one, and you're saying instead of going down to one and three quarters, I went to.
It's not, it's not an increase over the current rate.
It is an increase.
So it's gonna keep it at two. How will we agree with that?
It's a quarter percent for ten years.
But you're not renewing, there is, you gotta be careful because you're not gonna try and tell people it's twenty-five percent increase. We're taking twenty-five percent your pay. You're saying it would go down to one and three quarters, but this would say instead, renew that one and three quarters, but that one quarter will now be used in this fashion, or the whole, excuse me, the whole two percent is used in this fashion.
Okay, what it is saying financially.
It's a quarter percent for ten years, eighty percent goes to roads, twenty percent of the quarter percent goes to parking wreck.
Right. And it will basically renew or replace the existing levy that was originally put together almost two decades ago to construct the recreation center and outfit it properly.
It would be effective when the other, the old.
No, when expires, correct, which is July first. And at that point, I think we need to look at, we have sources of debt that are going away, we have additional income coming in from NE RSD to the tune of two hundred and twenty-five thousand. So the commitment on this previous increase was to use it for roads and storm water. I think we should not even do that. I think we should allow NE RSD to fund what we're doing. So I'm saying the recreation center would then be the other high priority item, so I've included it in this quarter percent.
Did you see this number that Ron was, the one that's circled?
I provided these numbers to everybody.
Right, I understand what those numbers mean.
So what this is, is on the second page, I did a scenario of.
No, I haven't seen it because I.
I gave it to you. You have a copy.
I, I understand what I'm saying is I am in review.
On the second page are the actual expenditures and revenue source in two thousand fifteen and two thousand fourteen.
I understand.
What I did is I did a scenario, if you took the income tax revenue out and you took the debt out, this is what the operation results would look like.
I understand.
And then I did another column with if you added the debt, well, the income tax in there, assuming you still got a quarter percent.
Yes.
I added that and then had no debt payment and what the outlook would look like, just based on two thousand fifteen and fourteen's activity, assuming it looks similar going forward, this is what it would look like with income tax money but no debt payment.
Let me ask you this. You would get income tax money of two hundred thousand here, give or take, in this scenario, in this scenario that I'm describing.
Right. If you look at it without any income tax, as of right now, you're short almost four hundred thousand dollars a year.
Is that three sixty-four is what you're saying?
You have.
Just three hundred eighty-six thousand and three hundred eighty-nine thousand.
All right, and, and this.
Yeah, that's mine. I think she gave them to me.
This analysis is which, well, how much income tax, that's what I don't understand.
Well, this income, this is just assuming you keep the quarter percent. That's, I'm just showing you.
This is Sylvia's plan?
No, no, this, the, no. I'm just showing three different scenarios.
All right, that's what I'm trying to understand.
So the three hundred and sixty-four, based on if I had no income tax, that quarter percent's gone, I have.
No debt payment.
No debt payment. Whichever they keep socking, we're gonna have this pound money.
The rec center is short, three hundred eighty-six thousand.
You're still saying I'm gonna be short, or I will be ahead three sixty-four.
You're gonna be short.
I will be short three eighty-six.
Three eighty-six for the year, and it's just gonna start eating away at the fund balance.
And that is just operating.
Operations.
It will, it will, you know, we are going to have by the, what would you estimate we would have in the rec fund by the middle of next year? Where did you put that in?
Well, no, if you, I did a, I did a split. What I did on the first page is I did the quarter percent for ten years at various scenarios, seventy, thirty, sixty, forty. The twenty-eighty split would only give it two hundred and eight thousand dollars a year of income tax, which would not.
Yes, that's correct.
Count for a shortfall.
Right. What I'm saying is this, have you, what was the amount of money that would be in the rec center fund if it continues until mid-year next year?
You can take.
Well, just give me a little.
About a million and a half right now at the end of two thousand sixteen potentially. And then.
About two point one million?
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, two million dollars. There's two million dollars there in that fund. And you have, what you're showing here is that you are going to add money in, so if you took my scenario, you'd be short a little bit, but there's management that can be done. There are membership fees that can be adjusted, so it's not like.
You have to increase the membership fees then?
Well, you, I'm not saying you do. I'm saying there are management activities you could perform. The assumption was not that they were going to have a million dollars in perpetuity when they originally passed this. So the, they came up with a plan to build the building and equip it. And what you've got right now is, at the current membership level, you're right, those are the numbers, I'm familiar with the numbers, and they are expanding above those numbers annually. What I'm saying is those numbers do not make such a wide gap if you have two hundred and some thousand a year, plus you've got that two million dollars in the rec fund.
So, let's take this real easy. When the debt's paid off, do I have a savings account, let's call it a savings account for the rec center?
If no more money goes in, it's gonna start dwindling.
But what would be?
Almost four hundred thousand.
What's in there when the debt goes away? Consider it's.
You have salaries and operations, and then you have membership income and just two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of other income.
But is there any extra money other than the income? So there's no like savings account of a million bucks sitting out here?
You have a fund balance.
That I can dwindle down?
Just the fund balance of a one point five million.
Well, let's, let's say you're gonna have two million, which is what you've just said.
After next year's five hundred thousand.
Yes, correct.
But that's not taking into consideration what next year's expenditures are either.
Well, okay. Let's say that it's two million in that fund, and they're, they're spending right now.
Wait, she just said there's not gonna be two million.
There will be something close to that, right, Angela?
Not after, she just said, you're not considering the expenditures for the year.
Okay.
Because they have to do the, the pool has to be done, so there's other capital.
The pool what?
Has to be painted.
Okay, the usual stuff has to be done, maintenance has to be done, not arguing that. What I'm saying is this, that this amount of money has come in every year, they've gotten something close to five hundred X thousand out of memberships, and there are some program fees that are coming in, and that adds up to.
Well, wait, didn't she just say that?
Seven hundred and fifty-eight, something like that.
But we subsidize, we subsidize today, if, if I read this right, if we took out the debt and the income tax, they're three hundred and eighty-six thousand in the hole because they're, and that would be based on revenue from memberships, revenue from programs, revenue from renting out the center, so.
Right, wait a minute, I don't get that.
I don't see that there would be three hundred to the.
You're looking at one year where you're gonna have a half a year worth of income.
Okay, I understand that.
After that, let's just assume it goes away.
Right.
You're gonna be four hundred thousand dollars in the red every single year, which will be.
You won't necessarily.
Well, we were last year.
Here, here's the thing you have to understand, that from my perspective, every year, you have a baseline budget, you have X amount to spend. Right now, they have been spending somewhere around nine hundred annually to run the operation.
It's one point one million.
Well, I looked at the numbers last year and I didn't see one point one million.
This is straight from the expenditure report.
Okay, and what, what has happened is, we've had over a long period of time, we've had the income tax running between one and one point one million, and you've had seven hundred and fifty-eight, so it's been somewhere around one point eight, one point nine.
For the, for the rec center?
For the rec center.
No. In two thousand fourteen, it got a million fifty-one thousand, that's net of retainer. And in two thousand fifteen, it got a million thirty-nine thousand.
I understand, I'm saying the total amount of money coming in between memberships, follow me, memberships and.
Income tax.
Program fees and that kind of thing, and income tax, somewhere around between eight, eight point one, eight point.
One point eight.
One point eight, yeah. So, the deficit that exists is a question about the, the gap between operations and the total membership collection and the, the program fees. Now, is it possible that you can increase those, those aspects of that? Yes, it is. So you're not necessarily going to be in a deficit forever, that's not a good assumption. You can adjust your management process to take care of that.
Let's, let Angela answer that because it's a Parks and Recreation Report and being on it forever. And Nick, it's one of the few things you've got to be extremely careful about is raising fees across the board because then you start to lose members.
Well.
That's what drove people away a few years ago when Ken Martin raised fees and imposed additional fees on, on the general public. I would never be in a position where I could raise membership fees to make that big of an impact without offering any new or upgraded amenities to people. I can't do it. I heard that Friday night, it was stated that we're too expensive as it is for people in this room to be able to join. So to be able to sit here and raise additional fees and be competitive with our surrounding facilities, that's, that's not going to be appealing to the general population. And furthermore, reminder bills opening in September, they are brand new, state of the art, they're gonna be open to the general public. We need to stay relevant in this industry. We're not just the city department, we operate as a commercial business.
I understand that.
And we have to stay current in this industry.
Right.
And not allowing us to have the funding stream coming in, or at least allowing the voters to decide that, is a disservice to this community because that rec center is going to shut its doors. We cannot maintain status quo and stay stagnant for another however many years it takes to dwindle the, the money that we have saved up.
I am, let me, let's just take that one at a time. What I'm not saying you should stay stagnant, I'm saying that the, there are some possibilities. Increase membership, that's one. Increase.
I just told you that cannot happen without improving the existing.
Well, that's, that may be. But that's an option, increase membership. You can also increase programs that pay for, pay additional fees into the rec center. Those are options that exist.
Those are options, and they are, they bring in very minimal revenue.
Well, according to this, they bring.
Programs bring in very minimal revenue. People complain about paying additional for fitness classes. They want them included.
I'm just saying you do.
And if I included them at this point, we'd be another more than forty grand down. So if I wanted to take those away and include that, I would in a heartbeat, but that now also impacts the revenue stream. So this all ties in together.
I understand.
And there are not simple fixes with no dollars.
Well, I'm not suggesting there are simple fixes with no dollars. I'm suggesting that if we're looking at the critical needs of the city of Macedonia, we cannot afford to have our roads go into dust. So that is a higher priority than the rec center and its needs. And you can make adjustments in managing the rec center to reflect that. That's what I'm suggesting. Now, you may not think so, but then we need to think about what it is we're spending money on. One of our residents sent an email to all of us saying that it's very unlikely that we can support, this, this community is going to support above two percent. I just went around every area looking at all the statistics regarding neighboring cities and towns. We are, two percent is right in the center of where everybody is. We will be damaging our attractiveness to do residents and to businesses, especially now that we've got this storm water fee that is on, that a lot of other people are not paying, it's like a tax. So we need to be thinking about what's absolutely essential, the must-have versus, I would like to have it, but we're gonna make adjustments.
So when you talk to people about the income tax, you tell them that we're very competitive because our property taxes are a lot lower?
Well, we're not a lot lower than, you remember, cities primarily depend on income tax. That is the way that we play the game.
But people pay taxes.
They do.
So they don't care where the taxes go, they pay taxes. So, so we have to take the whole picture of what someone pays in taxes.
Well, I understand.
And not tell them it's a twenty-five percent increase in their taxes.
It is a twenty-five percent increase in their income tax, that's what it says.
Let me interrupt a second. I talked to a resident who also works in the city, who also owns a business in this community. They want the rec center to expand. They also know they're gonna pay NE OSRD, which kind of means like a scare tactic. It's been there, they paid it before, it's back. We've already fought the battle we spent on. they paid it before, it's back, we've already fought the battle we spent on it. They have no problem with the tax increase. That person's gonna get hit three different ways, and they have no concern, because it's the future. So, when you say, you get people who say, "No, I can't afford it, I'm gonna pay for it, my husband's gonna pay for it." I had another resident tell me, you know, you did, you did these homes for the roads, too bad about the rest. And I'm like, okay, so what do we do, assess people? I mean, let's look at the picture of what do we do to get roads. We're now going back, we're gonna get a bond and pay. Do we assess people? Do we take away the tax credit, go to two and a half? I mean, seriously.
No, we're not suggesting that.
I respect your position, because that's your position. But mine is, if we stop growing as a city, what are we gonna, who are we gonna attract here? Would you want it, you know, that's, that's my perspective.
I understand.
Is that we need to keep on increasing our amenities, so people wanna move to Macedonia.
Well, people love Macedonia, but what I'm saying is...
But there's other options, so as much as you say that two percent in other cities are attractive, those other cities also have other amenities that are attractive.
Well, not everybody, Hudson doesn't have a rec center.
They have the highest taxes in some counties.
Well, they do, because they have a library, they have a library that they support through property taxes. That's their judgment, that they wanna do that.
So, but I'm just saying that there's...
They're almost double what we pay.
I understand.
There's different, there's different advantages of living in Macedonia there are in Hudson. That does not, does not, it's our jobs to provide to people.
Well, it is not our, our job is to, is to look at what is essential and make sure we're supporting that.
I guess the definition of essential is...
Well, essential is, I, I need to buy food, I need to have my car payment, I need to buy gasoline, I need to, and not essential is, I need to take a vacation to the lake.
How about, I want my, my value, my property of my value to increase, the value of my property to...
The value of your property is going to be looked at in terms of people moving here. What are your roads like? What is your tax picture? You're two and a half percent or two and a quarter, everybody else?
So, let me tell you a scenario. So, say that, that we, we are lucky enough to get you to support some sort of increase, and I hope that we can, because it's what is needed to fix these roads.
No, it's not.
And we can, we can tell people, listen, you might pay an extra five hundred dollars a year for, say, seven years, so that's gonna cost you thirty-five hundred dollars. But hopefully, in that seven years, the value of your house, because we put a roads program together, will increase five thousand dollars. Doesn't that make a little bit of sense to do it that way?
No, it doesn't, because what you, if you wanna say, oh, by the way, we're gonna fix your roads and we're gonna keep it at two percent, but we wanna have a recreation center that's top of the line, so we're gonna ask you to pay an extra quarter percent to support that. Then that's fine with me, let's go see if they'll do that, but, but to continue...
Listen, we would like you to support it, or at least not campaign against it, and let the voters speak, and not go out there and vote against it.
The voters did speak already.
You might go out there and campaign hard against it.
Can I ask a clear question?
Well, you didn't ask.
And it was a different, it was a different, it was a half.
Can I ask a question?
It was a half percent too, so it's a little different.
And Sylvia's proposal?
But if we went out there and, as a team, said this is what the city needs to move forward to increase our value, then it would work.
What I'm saying to you is this, within the two percent that we're gonna pay are all of the essential things, in my opinion. If we wanna, if we wanna propose to the voters to go out and pay an extra quarter percent in the future to support the recreation center...
We just showed you it didn't, it's all short of supporting the rec center.
Well, it's all short if you current, manage it as it's currently done, that's true.
So, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna engage in this.
This is a business process.
So, you've already said that you're, you're the best engineer, you're the Parks inject, because you're the only person that has access to, you already told him how to do his job and her how to do her job.
I did not.
There you did.
Well, you basically said that you don't respect the numbers that Mike Ladd and Nick Feeney did. You don't affect your managers' file, because it needs to be managed better.
That is a...
All right, well, that's what I'm saying, you know, you can't, you can't wear all these hats. At some point, you're gonna have to trust the people who are doing this for a living, and say, these numbers are theoretically what we have to work with. It puts us all in a bad position, because this is what you do. And I'm not harping, because I respect you, but you can't start at a different point than everybody else, because you have a different numbers, because it's not fair to everybody else who are on council.
Well, I am not saying anything about different numbers, I am perfectly willing to use Rhonda's numbers, I've used Rhonda's number.
But you're not Mike Ladd and Nick Feeney's.
Well, Mike Ladd and Nick Feeney did not do a detailed plan, all they did was they drove the roads and they made an estimate based on that, and...
Which, that's what their job was to do.
Is that not an ODOT standard, what they did to, to get to those assessments, and did you not also verify those, because I could have swore the mayor so that you did go verify those?
Yeah, I've been through this report, and we've all seen it.
Yeah, we've all seen it.
Sure, yeah, and I have no problems with the ratings...
I don't either.
That my predecessors have done, ignore the dollar.
So, he is essentially telling you that he's verifying the dollar amounts needed to repair what we need to do. Now, let me give you a macro picture, and I'm, I'm gonna leave this, this is my last statement about all this. Macro view, way up high in the sky. We've got a pretty big problem in our, in our general fund here too. Now, a wise person once told me, who used to sit in that very chair, said that you should have a twenty percent carryover every year to appropriate for emergencies. Dave Jane and I, we fell into one of those emergencies, and my fear is that emergency is coming back again. Our carryover this year is gonna be five hundred.
It's estimated, if we spend what we budgeted, it's five hundred and sixty thousand.
Five hundred and sixty thousand, which we will eat through like nothing, and then we'll go back to bare bones, we'll cut everything down, which we've never recovered from. I'm just trying to give us a little stability, so that outside of the roads and the stormwater, there are other responsibilities we have, and no one's even talked about that. But all this accomplishes, is it alleviates the strain on that general fund, to maybe build up to that twenty percent, like as a standard in, in all municipalities, so that when we, we reach this next emergency, which could happen any day, we have something to do it. You're not even taking into account, and I know I'm, I'm being redundant when I say this, police cars, fire equipment, any other emergency that pops up. We're not looking at any of that, we're, we're just trying to fix the worst roads, which, this, this thing's gonna snowball, we're gonna have worse and worse roads. And the thing that concerns me the most, I'm looking at Kevin's proposal here, Prodrive's not even on there, my God, have you driven it lately? And in six, hold on, in six years from now, seven years, if we got to it in the seventh year, can you imagine what that road's gonna be like? It's gonna be atrocious, it's not even gonna be drivable. So, what I'm getting at is, your plan, and I think the majority of council's telling you, is not gonna work. Now, you, you can take that with a grain of salt, or you can work with us to find somewhere in the middle. That's what, that was the hope.
Well, we're not working for the middle, because you've told, you've got it, or you're gonna pass it, and that'll be the end of it.
We need, we need to have a plan that addresses improvements to the rec center. So, I just kinda made a little list that...
I, I understand the list.
Here are some of the things that...
May I say something then, in response to what he's saying? The...
And I think, first of all...
As you see, it's too...
I wanna say thank you for putting the proposal together. It's something for us to talk about, something for us to look at. What becomes very evident is, if we go this route, there's not enough money for the rec center to stay in business. That's bottom line, it would be gone in a matter of a couple of years, because if you raise the fees, if you raise the programming, if you, you start to lose members as you lose members, I mean, and this also says for maintenance and operation, including any new construction, well, if I'm, if I read this right, you're saying we'd get a two hundred and eight thousand a year?
Yeah, possibly.
But we're three hundred and eighty-six, is what we need for operating.
It would give us two hundred and eight thousand for the rec center and eight hundred and thirty-two thousand for roads, correct?
But for the rec center, I, I would still be short then by one hundred and seventy-eight.
Two hundred thousand.
And that's just operating. So, this, this basically says, take that quarter percent and split it between things, and rec center, you gotta go figure out a way to do it. I'm not a real fan of that, because I'm a real proponent for the rec center. I've used it, I have used it.
Right.
My concern is, we gotta do our roads, but do we do it at the cost of the rec center? Well, we might as well just close it today.
Perfect, right, perfect.
Either we don't have to close the doors, we have to manage differently. Now, but let me respond to what you're...
How are you gonna manage a shortfall of two hundred million?
They've got a two million dollar, they're gonna have a two million dollar fund to work from.
It's not two million, we already said it wasn't two.
Yes, you, Rhonda already told us, we don't have two million.
And no one's even mentioned a three hundred thousand dollar parking lot that needs done today.
Well, let's talk about, let's talk about, then, we could have fixed that parking lot this year, last year, whatever, but we didn't. Now, let's, let's just talk about this issue about, we didn't do a baseline budget this year. If we, a baseline budget that ever, ever I've been involved in is, you start with what did you spend last year in operations, and you increment it, based on requirement for payment of any raises, that kind of thing. I know you did that, but we had a lot of stuff layered on top of there, including this, you know, add a police officer, we can have an SRO officer over there, add these people, add those people, do...
They were just replacements.
We didn't do that.
Well, they weren't just replacements.
We did replacements only.
Well, essentials, they're not essential if we don't have the money.
What is essential? Having police, is that essential? If no one had, if no one did any time, would it be essential?
Well...
I mean, what is essential?
Listen, we have police, what we're talking about is...
Just because you didn't agree it was essential, the majority of council did believe it was essential.
I agree, but that means that you didn't think the roads were essential, because you weren't putting it into that.
First of all, we did have a bottom line budget, we compared fourteen, fifteen, and then to sixteen. Second of all, we talked about the increase in pay. Third of all, we also talked about, we didn't hire anybody. We sat here as a group and decided we could not afford to hire anyone. The service department is still working at a ten-year-ago number of people. They have lost people, because we went to zero percent raises for three years and had to have people leave. So, don't say we didn't do that when we did. We're also not gonna find money growing on trees.
We didn't, we didn't budget for roads, because it wasn't any...
We didn't have any money, we didn't do any capital, we didn't have any money.
This is the list, I'm on, I'm on the Parks and Rec Committee, I'm on the redevelopment Committee, and Angela and I put this together. These are the essentials to continue growth of the Parks and Rec and the park system. I mean, maybe not all of them are essential this year, but this is what growth looks like.
Okay, sure.
Last one, quick question. Fifty, the ones that's on the table, other than Sylvia's, since she probably already knows this answer, if we raise to two and a quarter, how much money does that bring to the entry?
Well, we would still get our...
Is that on that little list?
No, it would, well, each quarter would give us roughly a million dollars.
For the road?
A quarter for the road and a quarter for... A quarter for the road and a quarter for the rec center. That's where if you renew, if you renew the rec center, you get a million. If you get a new, you get a million to a million and a half. It depends on what Cleveland and Akron does, because they're looking to raise theirs to two and a half percent.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I'd like to call to order the special council meeting, August eighth, twenty sixteen. We will call this seven thirty-seven. This is our CC, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bilkey?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Sanakin?
Here.
Mr. Moller?
Here.
And Ms. Tully?
Here.
Uh, being it's a special meeting, we don't normally do this, but we're gonna have public comments, because there was a lot of folks that wanted to speak, so if you come to the microphone, state your name, your address, and please try to keep it to five minutes or less. Our first person is Jessica Brant.
Hello, I'm Jessica Brant, I live at five seven three Blue Jay Trail. I've lived in Macedonia my entire life, I'm thirty-seven. I bought a house in the same neighborhood where I grew up. I've been going to the rec center since it was open, I just came from the rec center, literally. I was just in the showers, in the dark showers, the moldy showers, from the very small locker rooms, crowded locker rooms, from the pool that, I like the pool, I like everything that it has. I've used the weight rooms extensively, I've used the machines extensively, but I don't think that there's any draw of the rec center for families, for kids. There's the pool, the pool is very crowded, I've taken my nieces there, on weekends it's very crowded. I think that we could use gymnasium for kids, I think that there could be more programs for kids, something with gymnastics, tumbling, and, and I don't think that the, keeping the quarter percent is too much to ask. I have a business here, so I pay taxes, I pay double, as it were, and I am for the income tax increase for the roads, and I'm also for the quarter percent renewal for the rec center. And I've seen plans of what the rec center was supposed to be, and it's nothing near what it was supposed to be. And I think tax increases are important for Macedonia, because we don't have the industry or the offices that the cities around us have. So, comparing us to Hudson, or Solon, or even Twinsburg, we're not getting that income tax that anyone else is. So, if we're gonna be a city that's mostly homeowners, the homeowners are gonna have to pay the extra income tax and pay the, the small amount of property tax to get what we need to be a city that people wanna move to. I don't think roads is just gonna be what people wanna see when they wanna move here. There's, you know, very little for kids and families to do, and I think they do a great job already, trying to make programs for the kids and families, but I think they need to step it up and have it an everyday thing. Outdoor pool, gymnasium, better locker rooms that are better suited for families. We take my nieces there, it's very hard to use the family facilities at the rec center. Anyway, I just wanna restate that I support the quarter percent renewal for the rec center, and I also support the increase of the half percent for the roads, and I think that's very important. And I hope to be here for another fifty years and paying these taxes, and I am fine with it, so please tax us, thank you.
Up next is Mrs. Hannah.
Tina Hannah-Souline, I've lived here about forty years, and if we're having problems fixing the roads, which many thousands of people use the roads, and we can't afford the rec center, how many people use the rec center compared to how many people use the roads? Close the rec center for a year, come back when we have some money. There, Twinsburg isn't that far down the road, they have a really nice rec center, and there's more being built all the time. We have to put first things first. I'd much rather drive on better roads than go to a rec center. And if you put, if you have the lists, what you have to have and what you'd like to have, you know, putting money into the rec center, at least in my opinion, is that. I don't, nobody on my street goes to the rec center. I know all my neighbors, they don't go to the rec center, I don't go to the rec center, and I was the one that said I couldn't afford to go to the rec center, which is why I don't. So, I think you have to put priorities where they are. What you can afford to do, you do, what you can't afford to do, you don't. And, you know, that's the way I live, that's the way a lot of people live these days. Thanks.
Karen Bartolozzi?
I live at thirteen seventy-seven Driftwood. I'm for the roads and a rec, but I also wanna know what the plan is. You're counting money that we don't have, come December thirty-first, until you pass one-fourth at least, the continuing thing. What's plan B or C, if it, we go down to one point seven five, for to pay for anything? No roads, no rec, what do you do? What's the plan? If it fails, you got your counting and it's passing, I hope it does, I'm voting yes. But if it fails, what do you do?
We are, we are on plan B now, we'll go to plan C.
This is plan B?
Plan B, yeah. Plan A was to pass that roads levy in August.
Okay, so now we have, is there a competing one-fourth for the roads and one-fourth for the rec gonna go up, or is it different, while you guys are doing this today?
We have not decided that yet.
All right, thank you.
Tom Illig?
I live at eight five six five Park Ridge Lane. I, I guess as a resident, I'm always concerned about asking for money, and never really understanding the rationale, or the plan, or the business case, or things that actually support and substantiate that need for a tax increase, or a levy, or whatever it might be. It's just, we give over our money and trust that it gets spent efficiently, and it's maximized, and we get the value. And I, I never see that. I, I'm, I go to the rec center, and that's kinda my focus, is we pay a certain amount. I, I'll personally, if it wasn't so convenient, I probably would not be a member of the rec center, because I don't feel like we get that value. But other communities seem to, to have certain amenities that Macedonia doesn't, and I'm sure we have some that they don't. But I, as a resident, and just a, kind of a common guy, I don't wanna go to the rec center and see junk on the floor, and hand dispensers that are empty, and paper towel dispensers that are empty on a day-to-day basis. It's just, it's, it's not right, especially when I see people kinda sitting around and not working hard, not, not putting what I consider an honest day's work. I mean, I go there three, four times a week, my wife goes there religiously, we see it every day. And I don't know what the overall projection, or what the need is to actually keep that thing alive. I do know that there's probably some opportunity to make things better with the money that we actually do provide and spend. I mean, that's up to you guys in terms of roads and rec centers. I, I don't think it's a, it's a project or a dilemma that you can't figure out. I mean, I don't know what the exact answer is, but just to keep asking for money and us not knowing where that value is, or how it, how we see it is, it doesn't... I mean, I don't know what the exact answer is, but just to keep asking for money and us not knowing where that value is or how it, how we see it is, it doesn't add up in my mind. Thank you.
Art Benjamin.
My name is Art Benjamin, and I've lived in Macedonia for over forty years. Live at right now ten seventy Xishoni. And I didn't want to overlook anything here, but I've heard a lot of comments tonight from you folks, and I have to agree with some of them and maybe not so much on the other ones. But I can remember when the rec center was being built, and it was like sixteen years ago, and I currently spend at least ten hours of my life every week in that rec center. I lift a lot of weights, probably more than I should at almost seventy-five, and then my grandchildren are now joining, and we swim and we play, you know, the basketball, whatever it is. And now my one is old enough to enjoy the steam room and the sun and stuff like that. That's one of the reasons I like that rec center, because I've got people that pay for me to train them in Twinsburg, and now they're coming over to Macedonia. Why? Because the weights are old, they're rusted, and this is in Twinsburg. Half the time, the hot tub doesn't work. Swimming pool's great. The weightlifting room in Twinsburg is dirty, the first two feet all the way around. You just take a look at it. It's not what I say is a clean rec center. Now, you made some comments about the towels and paper laying on the floor. Well, the paper's laying on the floor because the people just don't have the sense of picking things up. Kids are allowed to run a little bit loose sometimes, but the rec center has been forced to go back in their, people that walk around and clean this and clean that and check the paper towels. So they got one person maybe doing three people's job, and they also wear multiple hats. So it's not the best situation, but they do try to keep it clean. And us adults that really respect that rec center appreciate what they do now. And if it runs out of paper towel, all you have to do is go, paper towel, and somebody will be over there within five minutes, and they'll be filling it. Using the soap dispensers, they could be looked at at least once every morning. I agree with that, so I'm not totally against what everybody's saying. But getting back to my world is I have a real hard time believing that anybody in Macedonia that truly cares about the growth of the city, and I say a wonderful city, would be ever against the quarter of percent still being put on the ballot. And it's currently in place right now. It's not going to be a big change to our pocket and our taxes being paid. So let it just keep on going. It'll help the rec center do what they do now, plus at the same time expand, it may be a basketball court, which numerous people that I know would love to see that. But the pool could be expanded, the bathrooms. Because it's currently in place. Put the glasses on, and I can read here. Two main points any city needs to offer folks considering to move into their city is, one, their school system. It has to be strong and maintained. They have to be rated high, and the parents of those new children or children-to-be have to have the confidence that they're going to be into the best school system possible. Now, the second thing, and it's very important for the city, is to have a recreation center that is well-maintained as ours is, and that way they can bring their family out on Saturdays, Sundays, whenever they can get together, and they can have some family fun and enjoyable. Our rec center currently has around five thousand members, of which three thousand are Macedonia people. And a lot of, you think about that. You say Reminderville, Twinsburg, and other places. I also work out in the Hudson Stow, which is four thousand dollars a year if you want to join it. And they give you your towel and everything when you walk in, but it's what Macedonia offers to the local people here that's really important to me. The existing one-quarter percent tax currently supports the maintenance of the rec center. If the tax is continued, it will allow the rec center to offer even more options for the families of Macedonia and people outside. Our community residents are proud to have it in their city. Many cities close to us have their own rec center now, and they're having a hard time keeping it up, just like we are, as well as other cities are building their new ones, and that's at Reminderville. In my opinion, we should allow the people of Macedonia to vote on the quarter percent tax continuance to allow folks in charge of running the rec center to continue to do the great job supporting Macedonia and the city as we move forward. Let us work in harmony to the good of our city and do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to legislative items, Resolution fifty-seven, twenty sixteen.
I move that we, I'd like to offer Resolution number fifty-seven, two thousand and sixteen for its third reading by title only, please.
Second.
An emergency resolution authorizing the mayor to apply to the Ohio Public Works Commission for a potential grant and/or loan for the funding of capital infrastructure improvement projects.
It's your pleasure.
I'd like to make a motion to amend fifty-seven, two thousand and sixteen to remove the words "and/or loan" from the title, to remove the word "application for financial assistance" from the fourth whereas and substitute "grant" to the Ohio Public Works Commission. And then in section one, after the word, remove "financial assistance" and substitute the word "grant." In section two, remove the words "financial assistance" and substitute the words "grant" for the application, a grant application to the Ohio Public Works Commission.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
What's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law. Ordinance fifty-eight, two thousand and sixteen, please, or fifty-seven, two thousand and sixteen, please.
All those in favor say aye.
We need a second.
Yes. Need a second.
I'll second.
No, but she's not moving to approve.
Okay, I'm sorry.
As amended.
I'll second.
We're voting on it as amended.
Fifty-seven, yes.
All right.
As amended.
As amended, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. You don't need a roll call.
And why would I need a roll call?
What's that?
He's saying by a voice vote. Why would, he's asking for a voice vote?
Okay, no.
No.
Do you want to do a roll call?
Do a roll call, I'm sorry.
All right. Mr. Bilkey.
Want to order?
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
These grants are for two specific projects, one for Shepherd Roads sewer connection and one for Highland Valley, or Highland Road, I'm sorry. The Shepherd Hills one, which is a sewer which will affect twenty people, a total of a cost of a hundred, one hun, one point five million. The roundabout on Highland and Valley View is also a million and a half. The grant would be for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The sewer hookups for the twenty people, which it's my understanding, we really haven't had any problems down there, is going to be our share of thirty-five thousand dollars per person. And I'm voting no, because I think these projects are so low on priority that we should not be applying for grants at this time.
Ms. Sanakin.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment also. I agree with Mr. Engel that these two projects are not justified, given the situation with our budget. These are low priority and do not justify expenditures in the next two to three years. So I'm, I'm not sure that I would support the roundabouts ever, because I'm not really sure that we have, really know whether we need them or not at this point, because we've, we've had our roads messed up so much for the last five years that I don't know if anybody knows what the normal traffic flow is. But in terms of the South Shepherd Road sewer, I just think that at this time, this is not a high priority, and it's going to be very expensive for each of those twenty homeowners down there, and I think it just isn't justified. So I'm voting no.
Mr. Moller.
Let me ask a question, engineering. I thought it was one point five total for both.
Yeah, that's correct. One point five total for both.
Fifty total would be our caution, not one point five.
No, I thought last, at our last meeting, I thought you said that each project total cost was one point five. No, not the total for both combined. The cost, the estimate for the Highland Valley View roundabout is seven hundred and forty-six thousand, and the Shepherd Road sanitary sewer, the estimate is seven hundred and eighty-two thousand. So grand total, the two projects combined, one and a half million dollars.
Does that change your thinking or not?
No, I still think that the cost is absorbent for twenty homes on Shepherd. I think that the fact that we're here talking about raising our taxes and then, and if we apply for this, we're committing seven hundred thousand dollars that we're going to do on these two projects in the next two years, it's ridiculous. So my answer is still no.
And mine's no also.
Mr. Moller.
Mine's still yes.
Mr. Moller.
It would be my thinking that anytime you can go after a grant, when it's something that's a necessity, I would agree, we should go for it. The sanitary sewer, I could see that being one that we may not want to consider, but when you're going after a grant, doesn't necessarily mean you have to take it. I've had experiences with roundabouts, and when I first drove them, I hated them, and I thought it was the stupidest thing I've ever driven on. But after about almost three years of driving on one, I realized the value with them, and I can tell you that that area, I have more complaints about that area and the traffic involved in that area than that roundabout would solve a lot of the issues there. So my vote would be yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Resolution fifty-seven passes. Moving on to Resolution fifty-eight, I'd like to offer ordinance number fifty-eight, twenty sixteen for its second reading by title only.
An emergency ordinance demanding sections one eighty-two oh one B, one eighty-two oh three, and one eighty-two four A, the codified ordinances of the City of Macedonia, Ohio, renewing the current one-quarter percent income tax levy, which expires on June thirtieth, twenty seventeen, and which is designated exclusively for maintenance and operation of the city recreation center, including any new construction and other parks and recreation purposes. Said renewal to continue for the twenty-year term expiring on June thirtieth, twenty thirteen, excuse me, sorry. I'm sorry, I put these out of, I think I've got these out of order. Do I have them out of order? I do, I'm sorry. Sorry. I'm sorry. This is the correct title, and I did number, this is the correct title. Starting again, an emergency ordinance demanding sections one eighty-two oh one B, one eighty-two oh three, and one eighty-two oh four A of the codified ordinances of the City of Macedonia, Ohio, in order to decrease the city's income tax rate by one-quarter percent, starting on January one, twenty seventeen, and continuing thereafter for road improvements and stormwater projects, and submitting the same to the electors on November eighth.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll start with asking Joe. You know, Mr. Engel asked you earlier, we had a question about, you know, the numbers that we already had from Mike Lad, Nick Feeny. Sorry to put you to task, but if you can come up with what those numbers would be, total fix, as Ms. Tully and Dave asked about fixing the curbs, fixing the ditches if need be, and addressing the water issues on those. Just so we have some accurate numbers so we can come in and talk about it. And, you know, truth be told, I mean, Mr. Engel asked you, I mean, would it, is it going to change your mind? Mr. Engel, I mean, does it, is it worth for him to do this work? Is it going to change your mind to have numbers that are in between six million and eight million to do this levy? I mean, is that, is that going to be a factor? Because it's going to be a lot of work for him to do.
I think the major factor is we have to know the numbers, and I think.
Perfect, that's all we know.
Sure. And, you know, and, but at the same time, I think what's demonstrated, that the day before we're going to vote, we're still trying to figure out what the numbers are, and the engineer hasn't even had an opportunity to review them. So, you know, my concern, as I expressed at the last meeting, is we're coming back to the voters in less than a week, actually one week from the day they defeated a tax levy three to one, and going to submit something else. And I see that as kind of in-your-face politics, and it bothers me, and it sure bothers me that the fact that, that there are apparently a majority of people up here on council arguing that we need to do that, when at the same time, we're acknowledging we don't know what numbers we're talking about.
You do acknowledge that it is a different plan that the voters voted on, though, right?
I'll acknowledge that it's different, but it's not significantly different from my understanding, and I don't think we've educated the voters at all of what the new plan is. And more importantly, we don't have numbers. We're, one of the last things that was handed out to us in the work session was a two-page list of approximately sixty things that the rec center needs, but there's no, there's no cost of it. There's nothing. We are shooting in the dark, and so my.
We can discuss that when we get to that.
I understand, but these are all my, you're asking me is if this man spends his time tonight coming up with numbers, am I committed to vote for it? The answer is no, I'm not committed to vote for it, because I don't know what those numbers are. And two, I don't think we have a significant, a sufficient plan to present to the voters, and I think the voters, if they're paying any attention, see this glaring problem too.
Do you understand that the theory behind the plan is to come up with a number and then divide that by what would be to pay for it?
I understand the theory, but we, we're, we shouldn't be working on theories here. We need to be working on hard numbers. We don't have hard numbers.
There was in our five-year plan, the rec center did put together some numbers, a few of the activities in there. Equipment replacement, software upgrade, the parking lot, maybe goes there. They know the parking lot was estimated three hundred and seventy thousand. Recarpeting, repainting, but the three things that were not included because they're levy dependent, so we didn't get the dollars of the outdoor pool, phase two of the rec center, and the splash pad. This was the request for the next five-year plan, but we didn't put it on there because we don't know if that levy was going to be put up for renewal or not. But I'm sure Angela could give us an estimate, but just the capital improvement that was requested for next year is ninety-eight thousand five. Two thousand and eighteen was four hundred and forty-six. That's putting, just to know, that's putting the parking lot off until two thousand and eighteen. So we have been provided some numbers and capital requests, but if everyone in council remembers, we chose the fact that we had zero money, so we didn't really do any capital improvements. We did the bare, bare minimum.
I want to jog everyone's memory to April twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen, when Shugrin Valley provided us this document along with our finance director. If you flip to the fifth page in there, every road is on there with a cost. So we've known this cost since April. To say it's been thrown at you in the eleventh hour is false. We know what it's going to cost. We know what we have to do. I'm proud of myself remembering I had this because I knew I had the numbers in there, and I wanted to reference them again, but we've had these numbers all along. We know the situation we're in. This is no secret to anybody, and we know what it's going to cost. We're spinning our wheels in mud constantly because we forget what we have. It even references in here, I'm going to save us a little bit of time. Souline Culvert, water main replacement, pavement repair, and the amount of thirteen point six million, totaling up to nineteen point eight million. It also has catch basin repairs, the curb replacement around three hundred thousand dollars. Roadway crossover culvert replacements at a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Roadside drainage ditch improvements at four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Preventative maintenance, just crack ceiling, three hundred thousand dollars, and future repair costs in excess of twenty-six million dollars. So we've had the numbers. We know where we're at. I don't understand what the problem is.
Nick, I'd just point out that the document that you're referring to, yes, we've had that for months, but tonight, the, between the seven million that was then raised to eight point five, was based upon the fact that the roads that we're intending to, to. between the seven million that was then raised to eight point five, was based upon the fact that the, the roads that we're intending to, to repair under this, or to replace under this tax levy, we're also adding additional work to them, not just resurfacing or, or grinding down and repairing, but we're adding curbs and other things, and, and that's where I say we're shooting at the dark. We're talking, we're not talking apples to apples, we're talking apples to an unknown orange.
Well, I, I agree with you, Dave, but I think this was an effort by Mr. Bilkey, and I applaud your efforts to try and form some type of compromise on council, and you know, he, he took the time to put something together to try and get us to meet in the middle, based on what he had. So it was his attempt at saying, hey, can we work this in this manner? And apparently, that's not gonna work.
I'm not criticizing Mr. Bilkey's attempt. I appreciate Mr. Bilkey's attempt. All I am saying is, I think the voters want us to have a, a, a reasoned, thought-out plan, not a, a shoot-from-the-hip plan. And again, that is not an attack on Mr. Bilkey. I appreciate everything he's done. But we are not talking the same thing, and we don't have a firm number. And so how can we go to the voters?
Hold on, Nick. I, I mean, we do have another night. We do have an engineer that's gonna get these numbers to us by tomorrow, and the theory still applies, is that you take the number that you need to fix the worst roads, you get, and you divide it up over a period of time. And I understand what you're saying, Dave, we, we don't have that fixed number, but we will have it. And it's, it's not gonna be that much off of the numbers that we have in front of you right now. I mean, it's, i- instead of eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, it might be nine hundred thousand, but it's not gonna be that far off of what we have. Now, now, what we need to go is, is this plan something that we all can get behind or not? And that's what, I mean, we spent a half hour in the work session talking about it, and, you know, we're, we're still no closer to even modifying this plan. This is just a, a model that I hope that we can open dialogue about. So, I mean, it's, here's, here we are, you know, almost an hour into our meeting, and there's no dialogue saying, how would you like to switch it, or change it, or amend it, or move it to where you're more comfortable dealing with it? And what, what is, what is everybody else's plan? I brought one, because I looked at the numbers and said, there's twenty roads that need paved immediately. You know, there's twenty million dollars worth of overall work, but these first roads are very poor and poor. And if we don't deal with these roads, the alternative is, I mean, it's assessing the roads, the people that live on there. I mean, we don't have money to pay for them. We said it from the beginning. You know, it, it doesn't matter if we were effective in our budget or not, the bottom line is now we don't, in, in some people's opinion. You know, but we don't have money to pay for these roads, so where do we get the money? Here are the roads in front of us. Let's hear other thoughts.
I think the fact of the matter is, and I'm scratching my head as we're all talking, because no matter what we do, we have twenty million dollars in work. And I'm looking at a seven, seven million dollar estimate, eight and a half million dollar estimate, when there's twenty million dollars in work. And to the gentleman's point earlier, you know, you talk about tax dollars and senior value. I mean, a lot of that, we see like with our state routes, where we got funding from the federal government. And we're very proud of that, but now our side streets are in complete disrepair. But I, I hate to be redundant, and I have to say it again, we have not raised our, our property tax since nineteen sixty-three. We, we've done well with what we have. We're at a point now where we need help. I don't think anyone denies that we need help. Twenty million dollars worth of help. That's where we're at. And the plan that's presented by multiple parties is only accounting for a portion of that, and then basically saying, some, one plan says, well, the, the rec center shut the doors. I, I don't think that's the best option right now.
Okay, is, I'd like to make some comments now, that, that we're still talking about fifty-eight, twenty sixteen, is that correct?
They all kinda coincide, so it really is irrelevant.
Let me just speak to fifty-eight, twenty sixteen. Okay, the, I do have a copy of the draft capital plan, so I'm referring to it directly. And there are five years of annual road program that add up to basically fifteen million dollars. And then there are a number of other items under this, showing issues like the ledge road issue, the Sulein Culvert issue, the Bedford amorti- amortizing issue. There's a lot of things in here. It's not just the road program. And let me just say this. In general, I think the roads are the most essential problem we're facing, because we've not done anything about residential roads, because of all the money we've been spending on buildings, and on things like the ODOT, things that we're so proud of. The new, the new entrance ramp, the different ends of Route eighty-two, there's been the changes over on Highland Road with that bridge over the railroad. So we've spent a lot of money on those issues, and whether we should or we shouldn't, it's water over the dam. Right now, we have about fifteen million dollars worth of residential roads that have an issue. And when we talk about this, we don't just talk about roads. This thing includes stormwater. And despite the fact that we pointed out that stormwater, at least the engineer has said, and I agree with him, the stormwater issue is being addressed through NEORSD that's charging us money. Right now, if you went home and looked at your bill, you'll see that they are charging us, and they're charging every business in this city. And that's gonna collect around nine hundred and six thousand a year out of the businesses and the residents of this city. That's a lot of money. Two hundred and twenty-six thousand is gonna be available to the city for its community share stormwater projects. We can't spend it on anything else. So what I'm saying is, there shouldn't be stormwater in this ordinance at all, because we're already covered with that issue by having basically NEORSD charge us a tax fee. And I don't think, and I do think, actually, that we can bond this out, because this is gonna, we're not gonna be out from under NEORSD anytime soon. It's gonna be two decades at least. So my take in the, if speaking to this ordinance is, it shouldn't include stormwater in it at all. That's number one. Number two, the, I don't believe that a quarter percent over five years or ten years is necessarily what's needed. We need to figure out an overall plan that details out year by year what we're gonna be doing, and how we're going to approach it. I don't, estimates are fine, but when we get down to planning something this major, like charging people an extra quarter percent, I think we need to be able to come to them and say, this is how this is supposed to work. We know that these roads are gonna have to be completely taken down to the, this depth, or we know there's gonna be mill and fill in these areas. We know that. We don't know it at this point. I don't believe that we've got a solid plan. We spent a lot of time with discussion in council that doesn't really relate to the kinds of problems that we're having with these roads. We spent a lot of time avoiding a lot of planning in the roads area. We just have a, a draft three of this plan, and we spent maybe two different nights discussing this. That's not enough time. We could have been doing that all through the spring and early summer. We haven't done that, because this is just, you know, first shot, second shot. We have something in this capital plan that says we wanna spend a million dollars buying off Park Avenue properties. Well, that's probably not, in my mind, the most critical thing we're ever gonna do. If we don't touch those Park Avenue properties for the next two decades, I'm not gonna care. And what I want us to do is to come up with a plan on our residential roads that involves utilizing funding within the two percent structure. So that's the basic problem I'm having with ordinance fifty-eight, twenty sixteen, includes stormwater money, which I don't think belongs in there, given the NEORSD. And it doesn't really detail out a long-term, we don't have a detailed, long-term road plan that we can cycle through every twenty years. What we have is a shot at what's gone on up to now, and there, and there's a lot of bad roads. So my take on this is, this is not adequate. We shouldn't be going back to the voters until we do an adequate job.
I think your, your point to the million dollars for purchasing is a slap in the face to the Future Growth Committee. That was one of the things, needs and wants. There was something that they threw out there to say, you know, one of the things we could do going forward, and there was just talks, this is nothing that was gonna happen, and we, we realized that, but maybe long down the line, and, you know, everything goes our way, and we can make this happen, but make like a town square. And they were working on a, a great little model to see if that could happen one day. It can't be referenced as something we're budgeting for, you know, it just needs and wants, something you can look at way down the road. That was not-
Nick, it's in the, it's in the draft capital plan, five-year-
You said it a bunch of times. I'm telling you, it was just a need and want, not necessarily something they were gonna do, so-
Well, then don't give me a-
One person on this council said we're gonna spend that million dollars?
But, but it's part of the plan.
It's part of- That you're referencing, and the mayor's referencing, oh, we need thirty-seven million dollars. That's part of the thirty-seven million.
It was part of the five-year plan, just like we've had in the past. Doesn't mean it's approved, doesn't mean it's blessed. In there is Sulein Culvert. It wasn't blessed. In there is our Lady of Guadalupe. We didn't have the money. It wasn't blessed. In there is the turning lane at South Bedford, turning lane at Shepherd. Not blessed. There are a lot of things in this five-year plan that we didn't do. But it was to start the discussion. So for you to say, you've asked for this, yeah, it was put on the table, and we all said no. You forget to talk about that part. Also, why are we here? Here's why. You hear what we need, with twenty million dollars in roads. Those of you who are fortunate that we did your roads last year, with money we thought we had, that we really didn't have, you're blessed. But why are we here? Because on Wednesday, if you don't put something down in the county, it doesn't go on the November ballot. So your next opportunity is next spring. So that means we can sit here and talk about it all night long, and all night long tomorrow. But if it fails, we do nothing. No roads, period. We have no money. We don't do any stormwater. Why? No money. I'm gonna face the fact, the estimated carryover at the end of this year is five hundred thousand. For a city, that's inexcusable. Now, we have an emergency fund, but as I've always said, you have your own emergency fund, like your IRA. Would you do that to pay your lights and your gas? No, that's the emergency fund. The other fund we were told we could use is for pensions. We can't touch that by law. So we have choices to do here. Do we raise the property tax? And if I see one more person roll their eyes at that, we haven't raised the property tax. Why? Because the property tax has been kinda sacred, because that's the only way the schools go. Why? Because the schools have never went back to the table and figured out how to fund it otherwise, even though they were told it truly wasn't legal. Other states, how do they fund their schools? Sales tax. You get more for your buck. So the sales tax, and it's not an exorbitant sales tax, but your property tax must stay low. What's the other option? You get your road, you want it done, you're assessed. And we go back and assess everybody last year, because we spent money we didn't have. You want it fixed, we have to assess you. Kinda like if you want a sidewalk, and it wasn't in when you bought your home, you paid for that sidewalk and the price of your house. You want it added after the fact, somebody's gotta pay for it. We traditionally would assess. Take away the tax credit. You don't have a tax credit, or we lower the tax credit. That actually is something council can take action on. Would I do that as a council member? No, because I believe that's your vote. Would I put it on the ballot for you to say to take it away? That I would do. But for me to voluntarily say, I'm gonna take away your tax credit or cut it, I'm not a fan of that. And the proposal that's on the table, it's a quarter percent more tax for roads and stormwater. And that's not every bit of stormwater. You know, council chose to purchase a home. I wasn't a fan of that, because we opened the door now that if anybody has water, they can come up and say, you gotta buy my house. And we have had one family already ask us that. We haven't done anything to their property, because we really don't have the money to finish it into the retention that it needs to be. We've talked about Guadalupe for I don't know how long, as I watched the woods behind my neighbor's house and next door disappear, and the water just flows right down the crook. That project is three hundred and ninety thousand. Do we say no? So our other choice, we do nothing. You live with what you've got. We come back and we start talking about it. We've got a road program that was identified. It's been reclarified. We've talked about it. We know how much money we need. One other word of caution, my fellow council members, a couple of them have said, if we do this, we're gonna bond the money. That means we'll have a payment. This council intentionally chose years ago to stop doing that. When we paid off the last road note, we said we would never do that again. Because then you've tied that money up, you can't use it for anything else. Where if I say I'm gonna do this road this year, and I have the money to pay for it, I'm good. If I say I'm gonna do this road this year, and I bond it out, I gotta pay for it for twenty years. And I'm between a rock and a hard place. It's your choice. My firm belief is you, as a resident, get to, your vote is your choice. I need to be able to give you the option for that. There was a proposal put forth tonight that we renew the quarter percent. We haven't read that legislation yet, but in that renewal, the quarter percent that was for the rec center, it then would take eighty percent of that money to roads, twenty percent to the rec center. Well, when we look at the numbers of the rec center and how much it costs for operating costs, we're in the hole, once we lose the funding from the quarter percent. Don't even talk about improvements. Don't even talk about upgrades. We heard, someone said we need state-of-the-art. It's not gonna happen. So the choice really, we have as council, and we're not gonna make that choice tonight, you're only hearing second read, and is do we go forth and put something on the ballot for you to make the decision? Everyone said it, it resoundingly lost at the election. The percent of voters was minimal. So did we get a real good picture of what people wanna do? I don't think so. And I'm hoping that, Mr. Bilkey had made a comment tonight, that whatever we put out there, we come together as a group of five to promote it. Thank you.
I'm gonna unrespond. So I listened. I listened to what you said, I listened to what Dave said, I listened to what Nick and Jan said. And they said, we wanted something that is, that we can list what we're gonna do each year. So I did. And that's what the plan is. And you just said that we don't have a plan that lists what roads are done each year. Well, this is what this addresses, the top twenty roads that need work. Now, the numbers need to be adjusted, I admit. But once those numbers are adjusted, we would have a plan that shows you how much money your need is needed. And if we can fit it in to, without raising taxes, then I'm all for it. But you know what? We can't sacrifice the rec center when we do it. And so, you know what? We can't sacrifice the police or the fire while we do it. So they're all essential, so, I mean, that's what I don't think you understand. But these things make the city grow. They're all equally essential. You can't just pinpoint what's more essential than other. That's like saying, I have two children, I love one more than the other. I love them both equally. Now, our nodes, our roads need work, but so does our rec center. If that dies, guess what? It's the same problem. People won't wanna move here. So we have to come up with a plan that, that, that can identify what needs done and fix it. I mean, and, and here's one. If you don't like it, you know, come up with something. Come back with something that's, that we can work with. But don't just say that we haven't presented something that's not detailed on much road each year, 'cause it does. And I, like I said, I listen to you. I wanna try to make you happy by giving you something that we can work with. Because if it, if it doesn't, if we don't go out there and ask the voters to vote for it as, as, as a team, they're going to look for reasons to vote against an income tax increase. They, I mean, it's easy enough to, to do, it's just, we have to come up, find a plan. I don't know, I'm just talking in circles sometimes.
I, I think what we're talking about here is very much- I think what we're talking about here is very much what everybody who has a home budget talks about, and that is, what is essential and what isn't. And if you have a home budget and you're very limited, then guess what? What is essential is a different set. Now, we have a whole community of people, and let me make one observation here. The quarter percent was put on in, I mean, excuse me, the half percent was put on in August, because the mayor and the majority of council decided we'd put it on in August. Mr. Engel and I voted against doing that, because we didn't like the fact that normally special elections involve lower turnout. And as it turned out, it was lower turnout, but it was resoundedly rejected. And it's, there's nothing surprising about lower turnout, if you look at every one of the special elections that have gone on in the last two decades, and you can, you will see lower turnout. That's just the way it works. Now, as far as what could be done, I'm looking at a plan here that's got a lot of bloat in it, this draft capital plan, but we don't have a detailed plan on what's really essential for us to spend money on. And let's.
Which plan are you referring to?
This draft capital plan is, now, this is what the mayor referred to as the previous regular council meeting, as, oh, we have $37 million worth of needs that we must address. Well, I'm sorry if there's a lot of bloat in it, and there is, and there's a lot of stuff like Park Avenue that doesn't make any difference to anybody. And I'm not insulting the Future Growth Committee. They're fine with me.
It's the redevelopment and growth committee, by the way.
Well, whatever they are. I am not concerned about trying to say anything other than this. We have things we need to do, one of them is the road, that's very clear. We can make an adjustment, we don't only have to have money from our budget dedicated to the Rec Center, we can also have regular appropriations that fill in where we have blanks at the Rec Center. There's no such thing as the Rec Center has to be sacred and we don't touch it. So, let's just talk about, we appropriate money for police every year, we appropriate money for the fire department every year. Why in the world wouldn't we just look at appropriating money where we should for the recreation center? All I'm doing in this draft plan, this draft ordinance, number 61, I guess it is, is saying, we'll set aside money for the recreation center capital needs in this plan, rather than having 100% for roads, for that quarter percent. I personally think that we need to appropriate where we think the money ought to go. And we only get X amount of money every year. And we're actually getting, I just looked at the revenues, the mid-year revenues, trying to figure out if our taxes are following basically slightly above the line they were last year, and they are. They are slightly above, they're not greatly above.
But they're $43,000 lower.
They are $43,000.
When I looked at the June numbers.
Through June, they were $43,000.
Yeah, I looked at them in the June report, and everything that I saw was.
From Rita.
Oh, I'm not talking about Rita, I'm not talking about the total. We are up in our, we're talking about our property taxes, we have three different kinds, they're up. Rita's just slightly different, but that is, there's nothing in this plan that says we are, we have any concern that our taxes are in the tank or something, they're not. We're well above where we were before we had the recession. We're about 1.5 million above in income tax, and we're basically recovered in the property tax area. So, we need to think about what we're gonna spend money on, and we need to have a very sharp, winnowed-out plan to spend money on the things that are critical. And we need to acknowledge that NERSD is charging us a tax, and therefore, we have stormwater money, and that's what we ought to use to support our stormwater program. Because if we don't acknowledge that, and say, we're not going to deal with that, well, I'm sorry, but every Macedonia resident in business is dealing with it, they're paying it in, they need to get at least their portion out of it. So, at any rate, I think we need to move along, I think everybody said their piece.
Well, I just wanna adjust the appropriation of the parks. It'd be the third on the list, and that's why it's not on there, because it would be, I think I said on Friday, when's the last time in 20 years anyone's made an improvement at the park? It's always on the back burner, because it's the one portion that everybody loves to have, but no one wants to pay for. When you dedicate money to it, it, just like we're trying to dedicate money to the roads, you take the politics out of it. There's no mayor, council that can touch that money once it's collected. It's going to go to your parks, it's gonna go to your roads. Doesn't matter who's mayor, who's on council.
Well, let me put it this way.
And that would be something that the voters would approve.
We have made major upgrades to the playground equipment in two of our parks, and that was done without dedicated money. That was done through grants primarily, but some additional funding was made. So, it isn't true that we've done nothing in the parks. I mean, look at the long, you know, that is just not.
Before we move on to 59, which was at some point.
It's not a high priority on your list, though.
Well.
It's the lowest of police, fire, and parks, it's the lowest priority on anyone's list.
Well, of course, everybody has priorities that they have to look at, in their life and in their home and every place else.
Just real quick, so people are aware that the proposals on the table take us renew, one would be to renew the parks, the other would be to add a quarter percent. You then would be paying 2.25%. The tax credit does not go away. It's not removed in any of this ballot language. Twinsburg's a 2%, Solon is a 2%, Oakwood is a 2.5%. Cleveland is proposed on their ballot to go to 2.5%. Okay, let's take a look at Twinsburg and Solon, and everyone knows the size.
Jan, not to interrupt, so is Akron.
Akron is as well.
Ron said Akron is proposing 2.25% increase.
But look at the volume of people and the industry, because that was brought up by someone here, you know, we don't, we can't compare the industry, we can't. Cleveland's going 2.5%, so if you're working 2.5, here you go. Hudson's a 2, Akron's a 2.25%. And in 1997, we did a temporary tax increase because of the recession, and we went to 2.25%, and then we let it go. Thinking the recession was over, even though every governmental agency would tell you that it takes a minimum of two to three years for a city to recoup from a recession. As well, then the state decided, they start, stopped cutting money that they were giving to the individual communities. So, we got hit with a double whammy. We got a recession that takes a while to come back from, and Vanos with you, I'm not sure we're really out of the recession. And it takes two years to come back from, and we lost city money. So, the proposals tonight, there's actually three. The quarter percent for the roads, the quarter percent renewal for the parks, and then Ms. Hanekin has a proposal just to renew the quarter percent, but split that between the roads and, basically, it's gonna be the operating, I don't care what you say, you can't put on here capital improvements, it's purely gonna be to help subsidize the operating fund of the Rec Center, which will still be short, unless you do other things, such as raise fees, raise programming costs, shut the Rec Center down on certain days of the week, I mean, start diminishing, diminishing the hours. So, we gotta look at the fact that we're two, do I wanna pay more taxes? Oh, heck no. But when I drive the roads, and I look at the stormwater, and yes, I do use the Rec Center, I don't mind paying, because I'm gonna get the amenities that I use, so.
One last point, I wanna make two things. The safe stormwater and roadways don't coincide, they do, and engineering will echo that, I'm sure. If you take Crow Drive as one example, where there's gutter pans on each side of the road, which are completely shut, that's a stormwater repair, that is not a roadway repair. So, to remove stormwater from the roadway repairs will not make any logical sense. Second thing, the fountain of gold from NERSD of $225,000 a year, in water main replacements alone, right now, we have $5.8 million in repairs.
Nick, could we?
We're moving on.
Detail the stormwater to, as it relates to the roads, and not put it as so vague that it could, that money can be used to do stormwater projects, but leave it in there to where it says, for improvements, as it, you know, as you need for the roads. Does that make sense?
I would venture to say that 90% of stormwater issues are related to roads, and I'm sure he would echo that.
Right, but I think the question on the floor is, what the language says, stormwater projects, and that would address Sioux Road and Lady.
If you wanna put it as related to roads, I'm fine with that.
Right, does that make sense? I mean, so just, so we collect the money, we could fix the freaking roads, and not use it for other projects.
You might be creating an issue with the auditors, though, because they're gonna get into an analysis of what exactly your project did, and that might be difficult, I mean, engineering would have to weigh in on the difficulty in distinguishing between the two, because there's, like Nick's saying, there's not necessarily a fine dividing line between the two types of projects.
Good question. Moving on to ordinance number 59, I offer ordinance 59-2016 for its second reading, by title only.
An emergency ordinance amending sections 18201B, 18203, and 18204A of the codified ordinances of the City of Massachusetts, Ohio, renewing the current 1.25% income tax levy, which expires on June 30th, 2017, and which is designated exclusively for maintenance and operation of the city recreation center, including any new construction and other parks and recreation purposes. Said renewal to continue for a 20-year term, expiring on June 30th, 2037, and submitting the same to the electors on November 8th, 2016.
Moving on to ordinance 60.
Can I make a motion?
That was 60 in.
That was.
That was 59.
That was 59.
That was 59.
Okay, that was.
I thought we already read 59 once, okay. I apologize.
I think we started, too, we got sidetracked.
All right.
Ordinance 60.
I'd like to have ordinance number 60, 2016, for its second reading, by title only, please.
An emergency ordinance amending sections 18201B, 18203, and 18204A of the codified ordinances of the City of Massachusetts, Ohio, renewing the current 1.25% income tax levy, which expires on June 30th, 2017, and which is designated exclusively for maintenance and operation of the city recreation center, including any new construction and other parks and recreation purposes. Said renewal to continue for a 20-year period, expiring on June 30th, 2037, and submitting the same to the electors on November 8th, 2016.
Again, why did you hear basically the same language twice, one in the body of it? Mark, why don't you explain it? Explain it so well.
Yeah, the first of these two related ordinances, 59-2016, contains the language that will be forwarded to the codifier if the road levy passes and this rec renewal passes. Ordinance 60-2016 contains the language that will be forwarded to the codifier if the road levy failed, but the rec levy passes.
But if they were all to be passed, how much is on the ballot? Two?
There's only two ballot issues, one road, one rec.
It sounds confusing, but there's a reason for having three.
Yeah, actually, the ballot language is therefore identical on ordinance 59 and 60 for the rec.
Thank you.
Mark, it just occurred to me that for 61, doesn't there the 48-hour rule?
Yeah, there will, there has to be a motion to suspend the 48-hour rule before it can be considered by council.
Can we talk about 60 for a minute? So, I put together a list of things that I've spoke about in the committees that I'm on, and the people that I talked to, and then Angela supplied what improvements are needed at the Rec Center immediately, and it's a pretty extensive list, and, you know, some of these things are, people roll their eyes, like, why do we need this? But other people I talk to, like, this is the first thing on my list. So, I decided to put them all out there. I won't tell you which ones I'm for and against, but you know, it shows, I guess, that improvements are needed, and expansion would do well. So, I put it together, because I like lists, and just like everybody else wants to see what their money's getting spent, so do I. So, here it is. I mean, I don't, I try to be as transparent as I can be, even when people say I'm not being transparent. Well, here's my plan, here's my list. As far as cost go on East One, I don't know. I don't know how you can get an estimated cost on a project that might be 18 years away. But you know what? It still should be on the list of things that can possibly be done at the Rec Center. And I hope people can look at that and find something that says, this is a good idea to renew this levy, because I'd like to go to the Rec Center, I don't, because they don't have such and such. Or I stopped going because the locker rooms are so small. Or, you know, I didn't have kids before, I didn't even know they had an indoor pool. Oh, they're gonna put a splash park in? Awesome, I'm gonna join now. So, it's supposed to not only be something that the city provides, but you know what? As Angela said earlier, it's a commercial business that can generate money, you know? And I just hope people take that in mind, that when you look for, when a new family moves into a town, they look at those things when they wanna buy a house. So, if you don't have, there's plenty of other places around here that have houses in the same price range that the city provides. You know, we gotta continue to provide. So, I hope people take that in consideration.
Moving on to 61, Sylvia, do you wanna make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to.
Suspension of the 48-hour rule.
Yeah, suspension, to have first and second reading, by title only, would that do the job?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And it will take four votes, by the way.
Yes.
We'll do a roll call on that, too, please, Josephine.
Yes.
Do you want a second first?
Well, I notice you made a motion.
Yeah, I made a motion to.
For first and second reading, yeah.
For first and second reading for ordinance 61-2016.
And just suspend the rules, the 48-hour rule.
I'll second. Roll call.
Mr. Bilkey?
You know, even though I didn't think that we'd get this cooperation on Thursday, when we originally wanted to make a special meeting, I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Muller?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
So, we are accelerated, then?
First and second.
Okay. And then you, I'm gonna, do I just say something now, do I have to?
I'd like to read the title.
Okay.
Okay. So, it's for the first, second reading, the suspension, the rules, so we're, they're all on par now.
Right.
An emergency ordinance amending sections 18201B, 18203, and 1824A of the codified ordinances of the City of Massachusetts, Ohio, in order to increase the city's income tax rate by 1.25% for a 10-year term, for road improvements and for maintenance and operation of the city recreation center, including any new construction and other parks and recreation purposes, and submitting the same to the electors on November 8th, 2016.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Apparently not.
Indeed.
I hope so, my life goes on, all right, too. Well, you know, it needs to get done.